I will now call the June 2nd, 2014 Blue Springs City Council Meeting in order. If you stand with me, observe a moment of silence and then I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I want to welcome those in attendance as well as those that might listen to the audio later on the city way up to tonight's city council meeting. The next item is the consent agenda. Are there items that need to be pulled? If not, I'll accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Lowes.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Kellpepper.
Aye.
Carried unanimously with Councilman Corbell absent.
Next, we have a presentation of the Blue Springs Chamber Leadership Class. And one of our own members is going to make that presentation.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Chamber. It's my honor tonight to introduce the 19th class of the Blue Springs Chamber Leadership Program. And several of them had commitments tonight that this was a large class, it was 21 members, and this is also, again, the 19th class. And this marks the 200, we now have over 275 members in our community that have been involved in this program and graduated successfully from the program. The lead program, Leadership Program, was developed 19 years ago, or actually in 1991 by the Blue Springs Chamber. And this class has just worked exceptionally hard. The challenge that they were given was what will they do to, what will they do to make Blue Springs a better place? And they far exceeded our expectations. We're so proud of them. And I'd also like to recognize that the President of the Blue Springs Chamber, Lord O'Leary, is here tonight as well. Anyway, class, come on up, those members that are here, come on up, come forward for a group photo. And June 19th at noon, they're going to have the Chamber Luncheon. We're hoping you all can be there at the Adams Point Conference. You're welcome to attend. But at the luncheon, they'll be presented their gift certificate, or their graduation certificates, and then they will tell us more about their class project and what they did to make Blue Springs a better place. And thank you, Christine, for taking the photo.
that you work for.
Shannon Sundberg, Truman Heartland Community Foundation.
Justin Stewart, Blue Springs Parks and Recreation.
Gail Porter, City of Blue Springs, GIS Coordinator.
I'm Shannon Bray with the Chamber.
Kelly Montgomery, City of Blue Springs Assistant City Clerk.
City of Blue Springs Municipal Court Administrator.
Ben McCabe with Engineering Division.
Appreciate you coming and making that presentation, but out of curiosity, since you started this, 275, did I hear that correctly? People have actually gone through the leadership class and you learn a lot about the community in general and certainly a lot about the city. Do you know how many of those people, and this might be a project for you, that are actively engaged in community service, just graduated, you know, on boards and commissions? Because I think that opens you up for an opportunity to want to do those kinds of things. And we certainly would welcome those names and people that are interested in serving on boards and commissions.
If you look at this room as representative, there's a number in this room that have been through the program. So I think you're proud.
Why don't we do that? Everybody that's gone through it, raise your hand. So that's a great deal of people, city staff and all. And for those that are not city staff that want to serve on a board or commission, let me know your interest. Yes?
And you noticed tonight, obviously, there just a part of the class was here tonight, but there were a number of city employees that were participating. We have consistently supported this program. I went through it a long, long, long time ago. But we believe that the program is very, it's very polished and it is a good way for employees from any organization or association to learn more about Eastern Jackson County. And so we appreciate the council's support and willingness to let members of our employment team go through this program because we think it makes us better employees and better to serve and do our jobs at City Hall. So thank you for that, Your Honor.
Bet you. Any other comments from any of the council members? Okay. But again, we appreciate you being here tonight. We look forward to that every year. And also, when you tour City Hall, we look forward to seeing you coming through and learning about the different departments. Next, we have a presentation on the 2013 Annual Report for the Police Department. Chief McCoy, you giving that?
Aye.
Okay.
Somebody who's really tall in this. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present information on the 2013 Blue Springs Police Department Annual Report. Members of City Council received a copy of the report some weeks ago. The segments I'd like to highlight tonight are in three parts: our accomplishments, our future, and a brief summary of crime statistics from the past year. For those in the audience that may not know me, I'm Chief Wayne McCoy. Our police department has an authorized strength of 138, including 99 full-time sworn police officers, 38 full-time civilians, and two part-time civilians. Our dedicated personnel make us the excellent organization that we are today. Organizationally, the police department is directly responsible to City Administrator Eric Johnson. In addition to city oversight, the mayor's Active Citizen Public Safety Advisor Board provides excellent input to enhance our partnership with the community and helps provide transparency by their monitoring of the public safety sales tax expenditures. Their quarterly report, available on our city website, ensures that we are very visible in our expenditures from the tax and that we are fulfilling the goals that were expressed to the public at the time the tax was voted in. Recently, several members of the public safety boards have completed their term and new personnel are being appointed. We welcome Grant Bowerman, Patrick Mitchell, and Jerry Kahler, who have joined, now joined the public safety board. And additionally, a student is selected each year to participate. For the school year just ending, it is Meg Kistner, who is not in that photo. This past year has been a busy one. The highlights I present tonight are just a few of many, but here are some of the most important. It starts with hiring the best people to do a great job. In 2013, we moved to full strength and met the goals of all of our public safety tax process positions to provide quality service. Our people are what make us great. We were able to streamline our bureaus. We used to have four bureaus, and we streamlined them from four to three for efficiency. And we were able to hire Deputy Chief Bob Muns through the public safety tax. In just a moment, I'll show you the organizational chart on the screen. UCR crime rates for Part I crimes, which are the most severe, continue a long-term gradual decline, with 2013 the lowest total since 2001 and an overall drop of 16 percent from We have now completed 17 citizen police academies with over 300 graduates. Some of you are in the room at the moment. Many of our graduates are active in our Volunteers in Policing Program called VIPS, our Citizen Emergency Response Team, you may know it as CERT, or our Citizen Academy Alumni Group. With additional programs such as crime-free training for both apartment complexes and hotels, crisis intervention and youth programs like Leadership Camp and our new Girls on Fire Program, CYOU services in our community in many ways. A strong presence in the school is also made through our School Resource Officers, our DARE officers, and in cooperation with the school district police, which those of you don't know has their own separate police department. The design phase of the expansion and renovation of the Howard L. Brown Public Safety Building was completed in 2013, along with the transition plans that you see in effect in this room tonight. This is part of our transition plan. Careful planning resulted in a successful bid process and the ongoing project that is going this year. Where do we go next year? BSPD in the future. The most obvious goals for 2014 are, of course, the completion of the building project. We have already successfully completed the move to temporary facilities and have continuously focused on maintaining service, allowing for efficient work areas for our personnel and limiting costs during the transition so that funds can be used to provide the best possible facility. Now, if you can see it, I'm going to put an arrow right there. And if you can imagine where that is, that's going to be the corner, the front corner of the building, on the northeast corner. And if you come back just a little bit, that's where my new office is. Doesn't look good yet, but it's coming. Of course, there are many other goals for the next year. The ongoing implementation of the Human Relations Commission to help ensure fair treatment for all segments of our community is a goal that is in progress now. Based on the ordinance passed by our council in late 2013, the HRC is off and running under the guidance of Chairman Louis Jones. We will continue to make customer service something inherent in our organization. It should be expected and it should be automatic. When the building is completed, we will again have the challenge of maintaining full service as we did last year during a move to a new facility, which can be very daunting with moving all of our employees around. Within the department, we hope next year to strengthen a couple of important areas of supervision. Our proposed, and that's proposed, budget recommendation for the 2014-15 budget includes a possible addition of a dispatcher and sergeant. This is an overview of the organizational structure. As mentioned, you can see the three bureaus, and I come out here to show you. This area here is all of the people who are coming underneath the sergeants. And this area here, should the one dispatch supervisor, has 11 people currently. Currently, a single sergeant may supervise as many as 12 or more people at the same time in a constantly changing environment. To improve the necessary supervision, it would require two positions, one on each rotation. We have reallocated job tasks formerly held by retired Sergeant Susie Demoe to others, allowing us to move that sergeant position to patrol. Internal Affairs now reports directly to the deputy chief. Accreditation is being coordinated by dispatcher Terry Sandlin. And then through a group effort, we have a team that works on accreditation. And counselors are supervised by the Crime Prevention Sergeant. Immediate crisis intervention needs that Susie handled so well are being handled through our counselors and through a detective. The addition of the Barrett Park Facility this coming year will allow us to have dedicated space for bike patrol and for staff. In addition, the added ability to maintain animals on a temporary basis without having to travel to Lee Summit will be a really benefit. Currently, we have to take everything to Lee Summit. Sometimes they're full, they can't accept our animals. And so one of the goals in the public safety tax was to create some area that we can take them directly and respond to our citizens without being in that situation where the animal session was closed. So we're pretty excited about that. One of our greatest challenges is going to be making sure we efficiently use the expanded facility. Later this year, we'll be working to ensure that the technology, furniture, and fixtures are selected to that happen. Those have not been selected. Okay. On the screen is a chart of the UCR crime data for the past five years. Part I crimes are the more serious crimes. In the standard measurement for crime rates, when you go on the major sites and you look at the State Patrol and you look at the site where they have all of the various and sundry police departments, you can actually compare police departments by looking at those. They're the specific one. They're broken down into violent crimes, property crimes, and arson-related crimes. Historically, if you go back 10 years more, Blue Springs averaged 2,120 Part I crimes per year between 2001 and 2006. That's about 10 to 12 years ago. More recently, the number of crimes in Blue Springs has dropped or remained constant even as our population has increased. In the most recent five-year period from 2009 through 2013, there has only been an average of 1,759 Part I crimes. And I think that's pretty astounding. This is a drop of 17 percent over the past 10 years. On the other hand, when you consider violent crime only, it's a different story. Violent crime has increased 15 percent, from 82 crimes on the average year to an average now of 101 per year. This is only partially explained by a definition change made by UCR for the category of rape. In summary, while overall crime has been dropping and reduced, it is more likely to be more violent than it was in the past. And those are just the facts. It's the same thing across the country from the standpoint of more violence. Part II crimes are the smaller crimes, and a quick look at those shows a similar pattern to Part I. In 2013, Part II crimes dropped 15 percent, although we did have more drug charges than we've had in the past. This is our accident summary screen. Traffic accident statistics have remained level over time or slightly decreased even as traffic has grown in Blue Springs. There are many factors that can influence this, not the least of which, I think, are the road improvements that were made in the city, such as the Woods Chapel Exchange, which really tremendously is something that I think has been fantastic. And the implementation several years ago of the Police Traffic Unit that focuses specifically on dangerous intersections, school zones, and areas where people have called in a complaint. We actually send them to wherever you may complain from as a citizen. In summary, like in any organization, it's all about the people. It's about the people that do the job every single day and that they are the true test of excellence. You can see that there were many outstanding performances by our personnel in 2013 that contributed to our success. The ultimate success for a police employee is to save a life. This year, we had a record number of 11 lifesaving awards to our officers where lives were saved by Blue Springs officers. It's pretty, I think that speaks for itself. Are there any questions about the report or anything that I can answer?
Any questions of council? Chief McCoy? Seeing none, thank you so much for that report because I can tell you, one of the major components of a person wanting to live in a city is feeling safe.
Thank you very much.
And certainly, we cannot eliminate crime, but we can certainly minimize it by the work that you and your department do on a daily basis, and I appreciate that.
And with the help of the partnership we have with the public, I believe we have done that.
Right, thank you. That brings us down to an introduction and a reading of Bill 4318, Mr. Johnson.
I introduce you, John.
All right.
First reading of Bill Number 4318, An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor or City Administrator of the City of Blue Springs to Enter Into an Agreement with Special Counsel for Legal Representation.
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second.
Is there a second? Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of Bill Number 4318, An Ordinance Authorizing the Mayor or City Administrator of the City of Blue Springs to Enter Into an Agreement with Special Counsel for Legal Representation.
Move the bill be approved on its second and final reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Kellpepper.
Aye.
Councilman Lowes.
Aye.
Carried with Councilman Corbell absent, giving an ordinance Number 4492.
That brings us to mayoral announcements. Christine and her staff have been awarded another GFOA Distinguished Budget Award for Fiscal Year beginning in October 1st, 2013. That is a longstanding recognition that the City of Blue Springs has, and under her leadership and her staff, we continue to get it. It probably dates back 30 years, I would imagine, somewhere in that neighborhood. So it just shows that we maintain good records and we do things judiciously in running this city. And so again, thank you and your staff for the work that you do. That brings us to Thoughts de Punda. And tonight, I found one, Arthur's Unknown, and I quote, "The best way to predict a future is to create it." End quote. That brings us to Visitors. And Ms. Melody Christman, I'm going to have you come up first and talk a little bit about CSL and the CDBG funds.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for letting me be here tonight. I'm not alone. I'm here representing Community Services League with Doug Cowan, our CEO, and we appreciate your time. We're here to talk a little bit on the CDBG funds that may be allocated to Community Services League. And we just wanted to, the handout that we gave you showed you the work that we're doing here in Blue Springs. Most of you know me, you know the work we're doing here in Blue Springs, you know how passionate I am about it. We have been busy bees over there. We need to open for a third day, and that is to help the people here in Blue Springs with their utility, their rent, their food needs, their clothing needs. We've become great partners with many businesses here in Blue Springs that allow us to work with them in our clothing area, the food area. We had a wonderful post office drive in the last month, and we worked with the Boy Scouts in the last couple of months. But it takes a lot to keep those doors open. And that's why we are hoping that these funds are allocated to Community Services League. If you can see on your handout, people think that Blue Springs, they're thinking of the guy at 7 and 70. Well, that's not, he's fine. He's got 100 bucks in his pocket and he's going over to the Radisson and he's going to have a nice dinner and a hot bath. It's the mother with three kids in your neighborhood that the children are dressed so nicely, but she doesn't want to tell you that she can't feed them that night. And that is what's happening in Blue Springs, and we're here to do something about that. And every day, we have people come. We probably serve about 40 people in a morning. And if you think about that, we have three volunteers and we have myself. And that's a lot of people to serve. And there's three to four people in each family that we serve. So we have a lot of work to do, and we want to keep those doors open, and we want to keep helping people in Blue Springs. You know that I'm very passionate about that, and I'm not going to give up until we make sure everybody has what they need here in Blue Springs. So I appreciate your time, and I would like you to let Doug speak just for a moment.
Mr. Mayor, distinguished councilmen and councilwomen and city staff, thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Doug Cowan, and I serve as the Executive Director of Community Services League. And again, as to echo what Melody said, we appreciate the opportunity to be considered and furthermore, appreciate the opportunity to be invited here tonight to talk a little bit about community development block grant funds. And I know you're very familiar with the program, but let me tell you just a little bit about CSL's experience, which is why we think we would be a good partner in this program. In our service area, which includes essentially the Eastern Jackson County suburbs that are east of 435, as we have, as you can see in your packet, we've got a map of our service area. The two communities that we serve that are very active participants in the CDBG program are Independence and Blue Springs. And to reiterate why I think, one reason why I think we would be a good partner in this proposed partnership would be to highlight our experience with Independence' CDBG program. In the last five years, we have had contracts, I should say subcontract, with the City of Independence totaling over a half million dollars in the same CDBG program that Blue Springs participates in. Furthermore, on top of that, we've had another, more than $250,000 in direct contracts with HUD, the Department of Housing and Urban Development. So we are a very active participant, not only with our local communities, but directly with the federal government. And so we're well-versed in what CDBG's national priorities are, how those trickle down to the local communities, how we can make an impact, and I think probably most importantly to everybody, how we can be good stewards of these very important tax dollars and how we can make them stretch far and do the most good here in Blue Springs. As Melody reiterated, inside of your packet, you will find not only some information about Blue Springs. If you're looking inside your packet, on the left side, we have our organizational brochure along with a summary of services of what we've provided to the Blue Springs community in 2013. And on the right side, you will see just an overview draft of a potential proposal with the City of Blue Springs to subcontract on these important funds. As Melody said, really, our biggest need in Blue Springs right now is to expand our operation and to keep the momentum going that our wonderful staff and volunteers have created here in Blue Springs and continue to reach out and help people. And to that extent, we're going to continue to work with city staff on what that proposed budget would look like. But what we've looked at, and this has been pretty common in our participation with federal contracts, is some money to make sure that we've got the right people in place, Melody in this instance, make sure that we've got staff available to provide those excellent customer service to folks here in Blue Springs who need to come through our doors. But then, we want to make sure that while she's open, we've got money available to provide direct relief to Blue Springs citizens in need. So we would look at potentially subcontracting for funds that would pay delinquent utility bills, would pay families facing foreclosure or eviction from their housing. And so ultimately, and this goes back to HUD's national priorities, is eliminating homelessness. And so through the use of these funds, the case management that Melody would provide and being able to use these funds, we would be able to help make Blue Springs a more stable place by having the resources available to keep families housed in stable housing, keep kids inside the school district, and ultimately, as is the goal of CDBG on a national level, is to make our communities an American, of course, right here in Blue Springs, a better place to live. So I know this is very preliminary, but as you are looking at your budget and how you allocate those CDBG funds, as I start off by saying, we certainly appreciate your support, I think we would be a good partner. For the most part, we are the only comprehensive social services agency here in Blue Springs that people can turn to. There are some other different organizations that provide sprinkling of services here and there, but when people come into CSL, this is the place in Blue Springs where they can receive comprehensive support. And we're not just a food pantry, but you may not know that we are a HUD-certified housing counseling agency. So Melody can provide certified housing counseling to families and counsel them on the options that they have available to them. We have a program through HUD also, as I was alluding to earlier, that is our Permanent Supportive Housing Program, where we have actually a couple of families housed here in Blue Springs where we are providing some permanent supportive, support for them. Our Work Express Program is booming here in Blue Springs. Our career coach is inside our Blue Springs office all the hours that she's open on Tuesday and Thursday, and we would expect that to continue on our third day, should these funds become available to us. So CSL is much more than just a food pantry. We are a comprehensive source of getting families back on a path to economic stability. So with that in mind, again, I want to appreciate the invitation to come visit with you tonight. Appreciate your consideration as we move forward on this. Would happy to be, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Councilman Carter?
I think I probably know the answer to this question, but would our CDBG funds be exclusive to Blue Springs?
Absolutely. When we enter into contracts like this, we would enter into an agreement to, of course, be... be specific, just like our Independence funds must only be spent inside the City of Independence. And the way that has worked in the past with Independence, you know, we have a specific contract, and so we would sign a contract with the city. I think what we do in order to make sure that we're being good stewards of the funds that would potentially be contracted to us is that we would provide a monthly report on what those funds are doing, what the outcomes have been that month, and so it would be actually, in most cases, CDBG funds are reimbursable. So, we have to go out and spend the money, leverage additional resources. We spend the money, apply for reimbursement at that point, not just a reimbursement of the money, but as I said, there would be attached a monthly report that would indicate what our outcomes are so that the city and the citizens know where those funds are being used. Additionally, at the end of the 12-month grant period, we would compile a year-end report that would be made available to the city, and ultimately, that would be sent back to HUD as part of the overall CDBG program.
Any other questions, Mr. Cowan? All right, thank you for coming. Thank you, Ms. Christman, for coming, and I, most of us know, and I personally know your passion for what you do. And one of the things she didn't mention, she's also a member of our Public Safety Citizens Advisory Board with the Police Department, so we just appreciate all you do for the community. Next, we have Mr. Dominic Fineso. Would you like to come up and introduce yourself? You want to talk about possible city code ordinance violation.
First of all, I'd like to thank you, Mayor and City Council, for allowing us to be here this evening to talk about our problems. And there's about six or eight of us here, but actually, I represent about eight more families that are involved in this situation.
Raise your hand so I can see where you, okay, all right.
What we'd like to do is actually ask you for some help. The problem that we have is, we have some unsightly areas in our neighborhood, and some of the problems have gone on for approximately seven years. I personally have talked to our codes people. I think they're getting tired of me. I believe it's Mr. Barrow or Barrow, but the address that we're talking about is 2643 Northwest Sydney and Visa Estates. Most of us have lived in the area quite a while and have been trying to address this problem, and we go to the codes department, and they actually go out and they tell us, they cite them, and they give them time to correct the problem, but the problem never goes away. As a matter of fact, the junk and the trash in the front of the house is actually larger than it was a year ago. You know, at times, the driveways are so cluttered with junk and trailers and campers that they actually have to park, I believe it's three cars, out in the street, which presents a real safety problem. One of our neighbors, as a matter of fact, just recently consulted a real estate agent about possibly selling their property, and they came out, and the statement that was given to that couple that lived there was, "You're probably not going to get full value of your house because of what's in your neighborhood," and that is shocking. And when I look at that, it actually is part of our ordinance, and I believe it's somewhere about ordinance 4176 in the definitions of nuisance, and it talks about if your property is, the value is diminished, then that is, that could be a violation of a city ordinance. If there's so much junk and trash piled up, it does cause a problem. We don't know what to do. We've asked the city, and I think our councilman representative is aware of this situation. I think he's been advised of it before, and we just, we just need your help. One of the things that we'd like to feel is that Blue Springs is a good place to move to, but not a good place to move from. So, all I can say is, we appreciate your time. Oh, excuse me, yes. If you'd like, I did take a photo.
Will that shine? Would that go up on the screen there, Dan?
It's a very poor picture, but... We took this at the last minute. This all happened last Friday and Saturday, so some of the people that wanted to be here
Well, while he's, while he's trying to see if that will show, I appreciate you bringing it to our attention, and we will, we will certainly, we have the, they're about to get, you get the address, Scott. What's that address again?
It's 2643 Northwest Sydney, and that's in Visa Estates.
Yeah, we will check that out.
If you look at this picture, that is straight into the driveway. At this time, there are either two or three more campers in the front yard and on the side of the yard. I've lived there 21 years, and we are seriously thinking of moving. We're tired of it. Now, again, all I can say is if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, all I can say is, thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Johnson?
Sir, thank you for coming, and I just have a couple of questions for you. You said this has been going on for seven years?
Yes, sir.
So, for seven years, you have been contacting city staff, and you have been asking for, because typically what happens in a code violation situation is we are contacted, our staff will then investigate, we will determine whether or not a violation exists, we will give the property owner the opportunity to abate the violation, to, in a sense, remove it, take care of it. If they are uncooperative, eventually, tickets are issued and it goes to court. Are you aware during the seven years, has that, has this particular situation ever gone to a court?
Not that I know of. I do know, and I was notified by the codes, your department, that there was some ordinance violations, and they were cited. That's all I know.
Okay.
I don't know if they're ever in the court. I do know that I've asked a couple of times to find, you know, after the investigation was made, if someone would please contact me. No one ever did.
Okay. Mr. Allen, are you aware of any of this, details of this?
That was not working, I don't think you...
Apparently, we have dead batteries all the way around. Speak up, please.
All right, no, I'm personally not aware of the situation. I would just, I don't want to hazard a guess as to what has occurred or not occurred. Again, we have other properties within the city. We have about 5,000 cases every year, but we have other properties in the city that if they clean up what's been in violation of the code, and they repeat and repeat and repeat, you know, there's an opportunity to bring that before municipal court for some resolution, but I'd have to look to see what's been done, if anything beyond this. But looking at this photo here, if the RV is legally parked, things of that sort, there may be pushing the boundaries of what's allowed by code, and we may need to look at, again, kind of directing it back to the mayor and council, we may need to look at some enhancements to the municipal code.
Well, it could even be a fire hazard or a health hazard. That tent-looking affair is right up against the house stored with, I don't know what. Well, by the way, I might point out, because it may not be any violation, but there, I've seen the garage doors open, you can't put your finger in the garage doors, inside the garage, and also, the backyards are so full of these tent-looking affairs with trash and things. One of the neighbors that isn't here today actually had to build about a 12-foot-high fence just so she didn't have to look at it. But the problem is there. It's not going away. We wouldn't be here if it was. These are not bad people, you know. I smile at them, they wave, and I wave back to them. They're just not good neighbors. As you can see, this has to stop, and I'm sure, Mayor, if that was in your neighborhood, that wouldn't be there today.
I would be chomping at the bits as well, so...
Well, we thank you, and all I can say is thanks, and we do need help to solve the problem.
We will check that out and see whatever we can do to try to help abate or correct Those are the only visitors appearance forms I have. That being said, we do have an executive session to go into, so we'd accept a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Levy?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Chair Unannounced.
Okay, we allow a couple of minutes to allow our visitors to be excused, and then we will go into executive session.